Let's go ahead and call meeting order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we continue on the agenda, I just want to read what had here due to the guidelines from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, this meeting is not accessible in person to the public. As such, this meeting constitutes an emergency meeting under the Missouri Sunshine Law. It is being streamed live on the district's YouTube channel and a direct link has been posted on all of the district's digital platforms as well as shared with local media. Community and staff members are encouraged to view the meeting from their homes. Additionally, recorded video will be available on the district website to watch at any time. Following the individuals who would like to speak during public participation should download the form linked on this page, fill it out, and email it to devo@stdragons.org before 6:45 PM today to meet. Your comment will be read aloud during the meeting. First, we have approval of the agenda. Motion for the agenda of the May 19, 2020 regular meeting as presented.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda items.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items as requested.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Motion carries. Next, we have public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and respond appropriately by email or telephone at a later date. We will not be able to respond to your questions at this time. The purpose of this session is for us to listen to you and give you the opportunity to share with us. Per policy VBDH-1, public participation at board meetings, the following guidelines and procedures will be followed. In order to speak during public participation, the public comment forms be filled out and submitted to the board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. I did not receive any public comment emails. Next, we have a report of superintendent.
Thank you. The first item in the report says notes of appreciation, but we did not receive any between our April and May meetings, so there are none in there. The next item on my report, I want to talk about graduation again because we do have a few modifications after speaking with the county health department and our local health inspector. As you see here, the last day for our seniors was last Wednesday, May 13th, and I am very excited to report that every one of our seniors will be graduating for the class of 2020. So, we are... I want to make sure and recognize Mr. Russ Toomes, that senior grade level team that really hounded in many cases and chased down those seniors to get that work finished. Mr. Haney, Dr. Boyd, Mrs. Sikowsky, the high school teachers, they really did a good job to get these seniors to graduation under the current circumstances, so very proud of all of them. And then you see on Saturday, we did have a military graduation ceremony. We had five seniors in attendance and two that were in basic training or were just graduating from basic. I think there was one that was...
One that just finished.
Just finished. It was a very nice ceremony. Mr. Haney, Dr. Boyd, and Mr. Nix did a very good job planning it. The parents, I got a really nice email today from one of those parents just thanking us for doing that and that her sons', siblings', and grandparents were at home watching, so they very much felt like a part of that ceremony. So, it was really nice to get that email, and it was a really good and touching and well-deserved ceremony. So, I'm really excited that we got to do that. I don't know if you want to add anything?
I just want to thank Mrs. Toomes and Technology Department as well for just being able to livestream that and make that possible for those families that were watching at home. It was, and I know all of you guys had an opportunity to be able to watch that as well. And you know, unfortunately, with the current restrictions, we weren't able to open that up to more individuals, but all of the conversations that we had with parents leading up to that, you know, we were concerned that they were going to be upset, and all of them understood the situation and were great to work with throughout the entire process. So, we're very grateful for that, and we just want to thank those young men and women for enlisting and going in and protecting our country.
Yes.
Thank you to everyone who helped me.
Absolutely.
Particularly, Mr. Haney, the way he kind of drew other family members in by reading those first stories off the top of his head.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah. Lots of virtual hugs, though. Yes. I saw that. That would have been tough not to be able to give those kids hugs, so I'm so glad we got to be a part of that. Yes. So, moving forward and based on the information from the county health and our health inspector, the graduation ceremony for Saturday, June 20th, will be moved outside with social distancing guidelines in place, which means, as you see up at the top, graduates and parents and guardians will be the only people able to attend the ceremony at this point. I want to make that clear because we want to comply with what county health and our health inspector is suggesting. We want to follow their guidance to make sure that we don't do anything to violate it and upset our community leaders. So, I believe Mr. Haney and Dr. Boyd have a plan. The graduates will sit on the field socially distanced apart. There will be a stage, and parents will be in the bleachers on both sides of that football field socially distanced apart. So, that is our plan right now, Saturday, June 20th. So, we all know rain happens outside, so what we want to announce and add to this plan is that if it rains on Saturday, June 20th, and we had planned to try to hold it on that day, we will push it back and have it on Sunday, June 21st, if we're allowed to have it. So, I want to make sure this rain makeup date goes out there and everyone puts it on their calendar. We also want to share that the junior class that's coordinating prom had a meeting, and they have asked us for now to cancel the Friday, June 19th prom date because under the guidelines, they didn't feel like that they could have an appropriate prom for the students, and they didn't want to do anything, again, that violated the trust that we've established with those leaders. So, the Friday, June 19th prom date is canceled. Okay? If we cannot have graduation in June, again, we have our Saturday, July 25th graduation date. We will add to that a rain makeup date on Sunday, July 26th, if we still have to hold it outside, and we are going to leave on this plan prom on Friday, July 24th. Okay? So, let me go one more slide, and this is all of the dates if someone is watching and wants to just see it all in one place, in one color. So, this is what we're looking at right now. Our whole goal is to give these very deserving seniors some type of graduation ceremony if we can. I don't know if you want to add anything, Dr. Boyd?
And the same thing with prom, too. You know, even if graduation does take place on the 20th, you know, we're still exploring options to still have a prom even if it means after graduation takes place as well. Those senior class officers were fantastic to work with. We had a meeting with them and also Mrs. Staff and Mr. Peager. Some great ideas from the kids, some great ideas from Mrs. Staff and Mr. Peager. It sounds like if at all possible, they would like to do something, and they have some really, really good ideas and some creative ideas of what that potentially could look like even if it is unconventional from a normal prom setting. So, we're prepared to, you know, try to do something if the guidelines allow us to be able to do so, and those kids have some fantastic ideas.
Thank you. The next thing I wanted to talk about is not on my official report, but I wanted to remind everyone that Election Day is on Tuesday, June 2nd, so please remember to get out and vote. We have three board members running for reelection, and we have a community member who is also running. So, three seats are open, four people are running. Please get out there and vote. And I think that is all I have in the report of the superintendent unless you have any questions.
So, as of right now, the guidelines stay the same and we don't fall backwards as a community. Graduation's planned outside the 20th, but the rain makeup date on the 21st.
Correct.
At 8 o'clock tonight.
Yes. And at this time, it's graduates and parents and guardians. We are working, usually we use some type of ticket system. I believe they're working on some method to identify who should be there and who should not.
And who will broadcast that?
Yes. We will livestream the actual ceremony, like we did with the ceremony on Saturday, this past Saturday.
Dr. Boyd, I want to tell you guys about some kids that I was talking with, some seniors. And when you really think about it, they said, "Well, you know what? We can look at it this way. We'll be the first class to end their class, end their year during their last semester, and they'll be the first ones that had a COVID-19 graduation."
Yes.
Not having on the day that was set for it. So, they were making, you know, they were okay with it and happened to deal with it. And I think you guys, I mean, the teachers and the administration have done an amazing job with those kids. You know, they could have taken this and just cried and had a horrible experience, but I think you guys have done a great job taking care of them.
Our teachers have done an amazing job.
Oh.
Our staff in general.
Thank you. Yeah, everybody.
I just can't say teachers, but yeah.
Are the guidelines to be done or is there a date now?
For guidelines?
Yeah. What do we know?
I, for the ceremony this past Saturday, I had a conversation with Sandra Bell last week, and we talked through Saturday's ceremony, and we talked about what a June 20th ceremony would look like. Then she had our health inspector, Bob, call me, and I talked through again, and he had some additional suggestions for June 20th, but we will just continue to have communication with them. I need to get back in touch with Sandra to discuss summer camps and athletic and summer school to see what her recommendations are. So, it's just, it's a constant...
An ongoing...
It is. It just evolves and it changes daily, weekly. It's just a continual conversation that we have.
I have a kind of ground in common.
No, it's not.
County phase two, step two Monday.
Yes.
And hopefully we'll get to a step three before that day. We'll see.
Yes.
I just want to echo what Martha said and so many others. I mean, I want to thank all our staff for all they've done, and the maintenance and disposal staff will continue to do through the summer. But the teachers, I really want to thank, and I know they work extra hard. I've heard from a few this past week who were having to clean up their classrooms and shed some tears, and I know they miss those kids, and those kids miss them. I know, I can't speak to exact or definite, but we all want to get kids back in classroom.
Yes. Definitely.
On to unfinished business, summer school. Yeah, originally, this is on the agenda last month. I think we're still up in the air last month, but we postponed it this month. We'd have liked much better now. But I put a plan together and had it in place based on a traditional summer school program that we've conducted in the past, talked it over with Mr. Haney, the summer school teachers, developed a plan. When this plan was developed, it's on page 68, I'm sorry, page 48, 49 in the packet. When this plan was developed, it wasn't known whether we would be able to have face-to-face contact or if it would have to be virtual, so I made a call and talked to the teachers about what it would look like if we did it virtually. They're on board. They're going to continue with what they're doing. They've used what they've traditionally used in the past, what they've implemented in the interim in these past two months, going through this virtual introduction and education. They can use those tools as well. They feel confident that we can provide our students with what they need to get those credits back. So, that's the plan right now. At the top of the summer school document is the COVID-19 disclaimer. If at any point in time anything changes, we'll have to adjust this plan as we go. And, you know, I would love to have those kids back face-to-face, but we do have to get confirmation from the health department. In order to do that right now, you're phase two, step two. Those guidelines, they can't be done. So, until she gives us the authority and we talk through how that's going to happen, we'll conduct it virtually. In addition, I talked to Mrs. Zuesman and Mrs. Diesel regarding students in the elementary who need some leave remediation. We have a plan in place for that as well. We received some guidance from DESI, and we treated the summer school application to DESI as a window rather than specific dates. So, originally, normally what we do is when we tell them our dates, we have an opening date and ending date. This time, we gave them the opening date, and we extended the ending date until July 31st. So, if something happens, our application will still be valid. So, it's been approved, and we're asking for approval for the tentative summer school plan.
I'll move to approve the summer school for 2020 as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Motion carries. Next, we have new business, the A-plus partnership plan.
All right. I'm going to keep this pretty short and sweet. I know that several of you guys served on our A-plus advisory committee. I know that I want you guys for taking the time to do that. This year made a little bit of history as we did it virtually. I'm not sure that that's ever had to take place in the past, but it was a little different. It's kind of I alluded to when we talked to Tracy during our FACS advisory committee. It's different times right now, and traditionally, that's been a luncheon and individuals come in here and enjoy some food, and we kind of talk about the partnership plan and some of the partnerships that we have, not only at the high school, but also with the community and local businesses. And so, things were a little different as we moved virtually, but we had really good attendance from parents, business owners, and board members, community members, and administration faculty at the high school. So, I want to thank all of those that were in attendance. Just a couple of the highlights, our A-plus seniors this year, we're actually going to have 54 students that are going to be graduating with A-plus honors. That's an increase of 19 students from where we were at last year. So, this graduating class really stepped it up. Part of the reason because of that is some of the waivers that DESI put out, but also a lot of our seniors were in really good shape leading into a lot of the closure. A couple of those waivers that the state put out, they waived the EOC requirement. Students having to score advanced provision on the Algebra I EOC, they waived that this year, which I will tell you did help a couple of our seniors. And then the other big waiver that they put in place was the tutoring requirement. They reduced the total number of hours from 50 to 25 for this year's graduating class. So, that also helped out a few of our students. But overall, 54 students, we're extremely happy with those numbers and especially the growth. You know, we had 35 last year and up to 54 this year. Out of those 35 from last year, we had 25 that reported to us that they actually used those A-plus funds. And getting in and taking a look at the current situation and kind of where things are at right now, I do look to, and I know I've had a couple of conversations with a couple of those students that thought they were going to go to a four-year university, and they came back and they told me, they said, "Hey, things are going to be virtual, or things are going to have to be online at my four-year university next year. I'm going to go to a JuCo. I'm not going to spend the money to do things virtually when I can do that at a junior college, and they're going to take advantage of the A-plus funds." So, those are kind of some of the niche conversations that we've had in regards to that. Our cadet teachers, we actually had 66 students participating in cadet teaching program, first and second semester. Those numbers were 60 plus both semesters, so we had really, really large numbers. I definitely want to thank Mr. Toomes for all of his hard work with the cadet teaching program. Him and I both co-sponsored that, and we actually, with those large numbers, actually brought in a couple other teachers to help us out on Club Day and help us with some of the creating of portfolios. That number continues to grow. At this time last year, we were looking at 54 students participating in that teaching program, and that 66 is by far the largest number that we've had. Mr. Toomes and I actually sat down and we turned it into an application process, just trying to kind of up the ante for the students a little bit, try to make it a little more meaningful for them, and so that way they can get a little more experience with some soft skills, some real-world application, and then also being able to turn around and utilize some of the things that they're doing as far as projects and assignments that are going to benefit them, whether they're going into education or whether they're, you know, seeking out workforce employment later after high school. Then we also had 29 students that were participating in internships with local businesses, and that's a big part of the partnership that we see between the high school and also our local businesses. So, 29 students are going out and they're working in different facets. A large number of those students are participating in our work experience program, and Mrs. Polley does an amazing job of setting those students up and getting those students involved out in the community. And so, that's an increase of eight students. That also includes our CBA program that Dr. Ederton works through. Mrs. Richie Dunsey does an amazing job with her interns with Ag, and so all of those numbers are included in those pieces. So, we want to thank those teachers for all of their hard work. One of the things that we did add this year as we get in and take a look at the partnership plan was advisory intervention. That was a new intervention that we had that we started in the high school. And one of the things that we do with that advisory intervention is traditionally during our Dragon Fire, which is our Tuesday, Thursday, that is our major tutoring time. But what we realized was those students are getting that Tuesday, Thursday time, but some of our students also need that time during advisory. So, we've pulled a select group of teachers. We actually have three teachers that are working on this right now, and it's very fluid. And so, each teacher has a maximum of five students that they can have in their advisory intervention, and so they will pull students. They get recommendations from grade level teams, and grade level teams identify some kids that are at risk that need a little help to get out of a hole. They might not be in a big hole that they need to go to mentoring yet for Dragon Fire. However, they look at them on that Monday, Wednesday, Friday rotation where they're in that advisory intervention for 20 minutes. The neat part about that, as we look at that program, is that we have A-plus students that are actually providing that tutoring and helping those students in that advisory intervention. So, we have a lot of student-to-student mentorship that's going on there. So, we've seen some success with that. We hope that that will continue to grow and will continue and improve. That's one of the big pieces that we added to our partnership plan this year. As I reported, 25 of our 19 graduates use A-plus funds. A couple of the big changes to the actual partnership plan, so as if you guys look through that big document, that's really the meat and potatoes of what we talk about at the A-plus partnership meeting. And just a couple of big additions that we added to that, one of those being item requirement number five, which takes a look at the volunteer program. We added a couple of things in there about the increased security measures specifically with Identikit as those volunteers are coming into the building. We thought that it was important to add those safety measures that have been included into that partnership plan, so that has been added. Talent Force, I know that Dr. Ederton actually spoke about talent force, and then the lady that actually came and did those mock interviews at the high school was actually on that FACS advisory meeting. But Talent Force came in to the high school and did some mock interviews for Mrs. Bader and the FBLA students, and so local businesses are partnering with that. So, we added that to the partnership plan as an addition. Job shadowing opportunities for a lot of our students. We're seeing more and more students that are spending in job shadowing. Actually, with our cadet teachers, one of their second semester projects was that they were supposed to spend a day shadowing their cooperating teacher. Unfortunately, that did not end up happening for most of them. A couple of them got on the ball and did get that opportunity, but it was really neat to read the reflections that the students had wrote because it gave us some eye-opening opportunities to see that they were really looking forward to that opportunity and that day that they were going to get to spend with their teacher for the entire school day, just to see the differences amongst those classes. You know, when we get in and we take a look at that, we don't really know how many students truly are interested in getting involved with education, and that's pretty eye-opening when we get an opportunity to see those reflections and see those numbers. And then the final addition, just the internships with the local businesses with our Dragon Flex program. We're continuing to see more students taking advantage of this in different and creative ways. You know, we have students that are participating in college and starting their college, and so they'll go for the first four hours out of the school day, they'll go to college, and then they'll come back to us to finish things out for their high school day. So, it keeps them enrolled with us, but also gives them an opportunity to get a jumpstart on their college education. So, more and more students we're seeing are starting to take advantage of that Dragon Flex program, and it's truly helping out, especially some of our at-risk students that are needing that opportunity to be able to go out and start some workforce opportunities. It's giving them a chance to get out in the community and in partnership with some of our local businesses. So, has anybody got any questions on A-plus partnership or any of the changes?
No, but I'd like to say for the program, I'd like to register against you. And you're doing a virtual.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you.
One of the best things ever come to you, Jim.
Absolutely.
It's a neat opportunity for a lot of our kids.
It is.
You know, and it's really, it's interesting to watch them and how they make it work in their lives. You know, we have so many students that are athletes that are so busy that, you know, they find out, they get involved with cadet teaching program, and they don't think that they're ever going to become or get interested in education, and it turns around and they decide that they want to become teachers. And all of that is because they're so busy that they can't devote the time outside the school day to make their tutoring opportunities happen, so they get involved with that, and we see more and more individuals getting exposed to education and wanting to become teachers, which is awesome.
Yeah.
At MSBA conferences, we'll hear a lot about districts that are struggling with teachers and promoting Grow Your Own, and I think this is our own little Grow Your Own program. It does, in a sense, so.
Yes.
I move to approve the A-plus partnership plan as presented.
All second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Motion carries. Before we go to action for post-meeting, I meant to ask you during your report, I've had a parent ask me about connectivity in the county. How many students have that? Have that?
The middle school and the high school did a survey in March before we went out, and of course, they monitored that throughout our shutdown. I believe the middle school was around 95% on their survey. The students had connectivity. The high school was 97. We've worked with Mrs. Toomes in technology, bought, I want to say, 20 hotspots. 10 of those did come in, and we've got those out in some families, which at the high school did raise that connectivity number. I know at the elementaries, those percentages were lower. It looks like they were around 88%. At the elementaries, we started out with a lot of packet work, but eventually, as those teachers got to know their parents and their students' needs, and, you know, if they could push things more online, they did, but those students who needed packets, elementary, middle school, high school, we mailed them, we've collected them, we're hounding them to get them back. So, we feel very fortunate in this community that our kids were so well-connected, especially as I serve on committees with superintendents throughout the state in areas that don't have any internet connection that their students can access at all. It's just a struggle to have the internet connectivity at their school. So, we feel very fortunate that we were able to provide the services, and our students and families were so well-connected that we could.
95, 97%.
That's... Yeah. And even at the elementary, I think 88% is really good, you know? And of course, as those kids move up, that'll, those parents will see the need and do what they can.
Thank you.
And I did want to point out, Monday is Memorial Day. Please take a minute to remember those men and women who fought and sacrificed so we can have our freedom. That's truly what the day's about.
Absolutely.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have action for closing meetings. I move that the Board of Education hold a closed meeting with closed record and build votes following a regular open meeting for May 19, 2020 to be presented.
following the regular open meeting on May 19, 2020, to be conducted at the RZV Thomas Lambert, 715 Washington Street, St. Irving, Missouri, for a purpose of discussing and voting upon the following items submitted. Hiring, hiring, disbanding of the local director employees, while asking probation, disclosure, and graduation of identified individuals. Preparation including discussion for negotiations with employee groups. For the good and notice of this meeting and its tentative agenda, we post as required by law.
Sir?
Motion, second, roll call. Terry Bossler?
Yes.
Dave Ova?
Yes.
Phil Hoot?
Yes.
Karen McDaniel, yes?
Yes.
Patricia Luwak?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven, oh.
I'll move to go to a closed session with a closed record and closed vote after a short break.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Motion carries.